This is a regular term meeting. Today is Monday, December ninth, two thousand twenty-four. It's nine oh two A M. We're at the B County Courthouse, Commissioner hearing room number one ten, Wildfire West Corporate Christie Street, Bevo, Texas. I made one or two. This is official call to order. If you would, if you'll stand with me in prayer. Pastor Dennis, would you please in person?
Let's pray. Dear great heavenly Father, we come to you at this time, dear Lord, to just bless these proceedings. Bless all in attendance and just continue to be our guiding Lord and Savior. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge.
Pledge Jesus.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas pledge.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
County dues and Commissioner Oliveris could be with us this morning, so we wish them the best. Recognize visitors. Is anyone in the audience who would like to be recognized this morning? This is your chance to be infamous or famous, whichever way you want to be. No one must be recognized. We'll go to Commissioner's open remarks.
Good man.
Commissioner Prius, will you lead us off, sir?
Okay. This last meeting, I attended the Amazano roundtable of meeting at the B area partnership, which was pretty well attended. We had some questions. They talked about it, and he answered them all, kind of giving us a little forecast of what might coming up. But he doesn't know all the legislative items that are coming up that they're going to, you know, they're going to battle. So he's just trying to find out from the community what they need from him, if he went through and did that. So he got that. We have a B D A board meeting this evening, and we're going over budget. Also, for B D A, I wanted to put out a, the new tenant, Electric Power Energy Solutions, is now hiring an executive administrative assistant. Anyone can apply by going to workingTexas.com, which is Workforce. And they're already, they've already got items out there that they've been trucking in already for the last two weeks out there at B D A. So this electric power solutions company makes electric type vehicles, A T Vs and electric motorcycles. And this will be an assembly plant that's going to be set up out there. In January, he rented one of the hangars. By April, he'll rent the second hangar, and by May, he'll rent the third hangar. He's going to take all of them out there as he gets going. So that's just an N Y I for the public to know that Electric Power, Electric Power Energy Solutions is on board.
And if somebody says, I'd like to see if I go to work for them, contact Workforce.
Workforce Solutions is handling all their iron, or they call B D A out there and we'll point them in the right direction. But there's also a website on there for them. Okay? The awning at the Justice Building is finished, and also the gutter, so that'll be one, another project completed. The courthouse generator project that we had here, we had Matthew Electric come by and clean up all their items there. So that's another complete item to take off the list. And then we had, oh, work on the Langley building, but there's going to be an item on the agenda coming up. I've got one more piece of the puzzle on that one, and that'll complete that building on the bathrooms and the insulation. Attended the tree lighting, which was very good. A lot of people. It was, it was great to see all that. Everybody had a good time. So with that, I'll pass to you, sir.
All right. Mr. Lee, it's you, sir.
All right. Excuse me. Want to thank Road and Bridge for some repairs they did to County Road three twenty-three, three twenty-four, and the dip sign on three fourteen. Also to Kenneth Mendoza, he went out on a Sunday morning. There was two stop signs down at the corner of three thirty-three, three thirty-nine, and three twenty-three and three thirty-two. He got those put up. Thanks, Kenneth, for that. Also, man, it was a, it was a week of dumping tires, I guess.
We had the business.
Everywhere. I want to thank environmental officer Robbie Guerrero. He picked up a bunch of illegal tires off of Kinkler Lane, and then a bunch of debris that was on La Pata, Beagle Road, County Road three oh one, and the airport road. And then also to TexDOT, there was a bunch of tires on seven ninety-six off of five thirty-four and seven ninety-six right at fifty-nine. So there was a, there was a bunch of tires, yeah. So anyway, also, I got the call Wednesday before Thanksgiving from a constituent that out on eight eighty-eight, there was a really bad hole towards the middle of the highway where the center stripe is. And his sister had hit that hole, I believe it was the same one, a week ago, blew out the tire, bent the rim. It was deep enough that it caused significant damage. Well, he was pulling a big trailer with a big tractor on it, and he hit that hole, and it blew out a tire. And so he was really, he said, Chris, if someone hit you with a motorcycle, it's probably going to kill him, you know? So I got a hold of TexDOT right away, and they sent someone out. And sure enough, it was, it was bad. So they got that fixed quickly. I want to thank TexDOT for doing that. Benny Martinez was on that for me. Also, I had a, there was a man on the west side of town here on Silvio Street that he was basically trapped in his house. It was about a two-foot drop getting in and out of his home. He was wheelchair bound, and if there had been a fire or anything, the man, he wouldn't have been able to get out. So reached out to a few people, and I think Nathan Alrez, he's the manager at McCoy's. He supplied us with all the lumber, needed a discounted rate to build this man a ramp. Mickey Trevino and Felipe Vasquez for monetary donations, Chris Malnato for non-monetary donations and labor donations, as well as Jeremy Gonzalez, Jeremy Lacy, and Lorenzo Salazov. Together, we were able to get this man a ramp built, and he can safely get in and out of his home now. So that was a big thing. Also, I attended the Christmas lighting. It was good, well-attended. And I want to thank whoever it was that was playing Santa Claus. I heard he was a pretty cool Santa this year. Thanks for doing that. Also, I will be getting with Road and Bridge on multiple issues that were brought to my attention by a constituent out on Ridgeway Lane. So I'll be getting with you guys. I'm about with that guy, and we're going to look at several things. I'll get everything down and get with y'all on that. So with that, I'll pass it back to my left.
Thank you, sir. I have several little snippets, if you would. Before we start on anything that I have here, though, I thank Ms. Rena, Jennifer Rena. You have a special guest here today that you'd like to introduce to us.
Ms. Angela Leach is here, yes, to help us out with any ARCA-related information that we come up with.
I appreciate Ms. Leach being here, and this may be one of the final times we get to see you because that ARCA deal is coming to a close. And I would like to personally thank you for all you've done. I know you've gone to extra training and done extra work to be sure that we stay out of trouble, and we're doing everything like we're supposed to. And it's been fantastic. You've done a fantastic job. And I just want to personally thank you for what you've done. You've gone far, far above where you should have, honestly, as a contractor employee. So thank you very much. You've done great. And B County thanks you because you've moved us in the right direction. We don't mind telling people how we spent the money. Several million dollars now, and it has all been for the good. We see what some of the other counties have done, and we would not even think about doing what they've done. But we're real pleased with your work, and please take that with you. And we appreciate you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And it has been a privilege to work with B County. You all had an excellent ARCA team that, well, you led that team. And April was on that team, and I believe your H R director and a few other county personnel, which are many as well. And that team selected projects that benefited the entire county. And it was a privilege to work with that team and the leadership in the county to see those projects be implemented. And I was greatly supported by my team back at that works as well. So all of us coming together, it has been a very positive use of funds, and I think you'll see benefits in the county for a long time after this one's gone.
I agree with you a hundred percent. We're very, very proud of what we did, and we'll stand up in front of anybody and tell them how we spent it, and we'll do the same thing again. We, we, we won't back up to anybody on this one. We did good. I think everybody feels the same way. We're very, very proud of what we did. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Also, Jennifer, I should specifically mention Jennifer Rena for organizing and coordinating and collaborating constantly. And we've met every two weeks for more than the last year, for about the last two years. We've met every two weeks to talk about projects and progress and what our next step should be to keep things moving forward.
Do you remember offhand about what the total total was, Angela?
Around six million.
Okay, with that six million, we helped, correct me if I'm wrong. It's getting more time on water supply. The Pettis, eight fire districts, thirty thousand dollars apiece to each fire district. We have Pettis.
B Development Authority.
B Development Authority with their infrastructure.
And it's getting more tightened.
It's getting more tightened, yes. The essential employees received a little bump.
Also, our E O C.
Our E O C.
We've got a brand-new emergency management center that we hope to be moving into probably in January, February. So there's some lasting improvements. It's not just, it wasn't just thrown in the air.
You purchased radios and equipment that'll be used by your sheriff's department and your emergency operation personnel?
And we also did a body scanner for the jail, which has really helped because they've found some interesting things in people's, also with this body scanner. And vehicles, it's just, we'll never get this chance again, probably, in any of our careers. But we had it one time, and we all feel very good about what we did. We're very pleased. But thanks to you for keeping us going in the right direction.
It's my pleasure. Thanks also to Commissioner Oliveris. Commissioner Oliveris has been with us the last year on the E O C building at our meetings every two weeks. He's participated in most meetings and been on site and helped us move that project forward this year.
Fantastic. Yes, sir.
I'll say, now that we said E O C, maybe Mr. Vargel can give us a little update of where they are on the E O C.
Yes, if you'd like to do that now while we're talking about the E O C.
Sure. So we were told on Thursday that the generator is getting delivered today. The only holdup right now is with that little bit of rain we had, they were not able to complete the pad that it's going to sit on. Tomorrow, we have at ten thirty, we have our final punch list with the contractor. So we're moving along. I figure probably in the next week or two, we'll start getting stuff moved over. So fantastic.
We have the final of the trades working out those details right now. So it's a little bit of overlap, a little bit of, you know, people here and there, but we will have that final punch list this week.
Great, great. Good job, good job. Now, a couple other things on the list here. Saturday, November twenty-third, I get a phone call. They had an emergency at the Dollar Store in Pettis. And the phone call, they had a gentleman get stung by a bee. Well, he was extremely allergic to bee, and he started having problems. Let's just say that. Sweated, swelled the whole nine yards. So you mentioned Kenneth Mendoza a minute ago. He was there and started applying first aid. Oscar Sanchez with Pettis, Pettis voluntary fire department showed up. So did Jesse Aronius with the fire department, administered first aid, and in my opinion, it probably saved this gentleman's life. So, you know, our people are out there, Jesse Mendoza is with Road and Bridge, I mean Jesse.
Waterworks.
No, Kenneth Mendoza is with the Road Bridge. These guys are everywhere all the time. They know first aid. They know what to do. They went into action. They probably saved this gentleman's life. So we never know what's going to happen, or when and where. Speaking of Road and Bridge, those of you that hadn't had a chance to go out on six seventy-three on Oak Grove, it's the first road to the right after you get off three fifty-one, they have their Christmas displays up. And Road and Bridge has been out there and really done a yeoman's job. They've exceeded everybody's expectations, kind of patching some holes in the road, one thing or another, getting it ready for people to drive in and out. So if you get a chance, please go out there and look. They, those folks out there go all out. If you've got kids, or maybe you have a dog that likes to ride with you at night, take your dog out there and show them the likes and the critters, because it's really interesting. Also on Road Bridge, the thing we have to remember about Road Bridge, they're in charge of the four hundred-plus miles of road in B County, but they can't pave this time of the year. And somebody said, well, why can't they pave? They've got all this new equipment on. Well, because the oil has to stay hot when they put it down and they put the rock on it. And as cool as it is, and as cool as the soil is, it won't stick. So there probably won't be any paving. There'll be patching, but there won't be paving until next spring. So if you've got an area that needs to be paved, just be patient. We've got some stuff in Pettis that's ready to go, but we can't do it because it's too cold. It's the wrong time of the year. So that will end what I have to say. Anything else, gentlemen? We will go on to public comment. Anyone in the public who'd like to comment, this is your moment of glory. Please step to the podium, identify yourself, and comment anything you want to. We cannot interact with you. If you want to call us really good guys, you can do that. If you want to do this, you opt it, you can do that. But this is your chance. Hearing none, we'll move on. The following items are administrative nature. Commissioner's court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by Commissioner, our county judge. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
We have motion and second. Any consideration we'd like to give? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, approved request to use the B County courthouse for swearing-in ceremony on January one, two thousand twenty-five, at ten A M. I think this was the judge's item. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. It's unanimous. Number nine, approve appointment to the B Development Authority board of directors, Commissioner Polias. I think this is yours, sir.
Yes, sir. We have two positions on the B Development Authority that are up for, you know, to re-nominate again this year. And at this time, I'm going to just re-nominate one, which would be Mr. Jody Alanis, and I'm going to hold the other one till the next Commissioner's Court meeting to see if the judge has any nominee that he might want to put on. Does he put one on the other day? I put one on, but, you know. So I am going to nominate, my, my motion is to nominate Jody Alanis for this position. I'll second that.
And motion and second, any other discussion?
I want to put the second position for January the thirteenth.
The next.
The next Commissioner's Court meeting.
Okay, do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Motion and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. It is approved. We're going to approve a resolution to support for county motorfield tax exemption. Madam Officer, is this your item, ma'am?
Um.
Or Road Bridge? It can be, are we getting this code on him?
Prove a solution for support. Yes, we, I mean, this is housekeeping.
Yes. Do we have a motion?
I'll approve.
We have a motion and a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Number eleven, approved December fireworks period for the purpose of restriction of sale and use of certain fireworks due to continued drought conditions.
A little move. Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion?
Is it Mr. Ryan?
Yes. So this item was brought to my attention by the fire chief for Beagle. Our current K B D I index is at six to seven hundred out of eight hundred points that we could reach. We're dry. So we were talking about it. We found that through TAC, we have to notify the state by the fourteenth of December if we want to ban the sale of aerial fireworks. So we wanted to give you all the opportunity to make a decision if we want to move forward with it so we can get the paperwork submitted to Austin.
Is that your recommendation, sir?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Patched unanimously. Both same sign. Number twelve, approved contract and agreement for detention of juvenile offenders between the juvenile board of San Francisco County and the juvenile board of B County.
This house, ma'am.
I think it is. Yes.
So.
We have a motion. We have second. A motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Get organized. Look it up now. Okay. Approved request, this is number thirteen. Approved request to allow the already boasted funds reserved for possible Department of Labor rule change on January one, two thousand twenty-five, to continue despite the invalidation of the Department of Labor's final rule. Let me give you a little background, miss gentleman. The Department of Labor said that certain positions had to go to a certain salary on certain dates. We implemented half of this, I think, in June or July, Madam Officer.
Of those two employees that were.
That we did part of it previously. The rest of it was going into effect January one. It's in the budget. People have, have anticipated this salary coming in, and my recommendation as a court is that we approve this and get this done. And do I have a motion? Have a motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Any question, please?
Does that bring up all the exempt employees? Is that, are we done? Are there others pending or?
No, the ones that, for the list that was.
Submitted.
Submitted prior, and of course, the court had already given the list at that time of who was.
So everybody on that list is checked off already?
And everybody, yes, it's budgeted for the end of twenty twenty-five budget.
Right. We have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Number fourteen, we can't do that for a trump clock. We've got a little time. It's a public hearing. We'll come back to fourteen. Number fifteen, approved proposal to furnish, finish the Langley building bathroom and seating installation. Commissioner Polias, this is your item, sir.
That's my item. Commissioners, this was not completed last year because I got so many other projects that got in the way. But there was about, what, eight thousand dollars left over for that budget that we moved, carried into this year.
Well, we've been carried over, but it stayed in the front office.
So there was money there. But we have an estimate of eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-five to bring, get a bathroom in there and bring A D A compliant, and also put the installation and seating and put the tops up. The, I asked for the approval to approve the eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-five completed.
Is that your motion, sir?
That is my motion.
Second. We have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
I can do an L I T from the monies that were budgeted in four oh nine for upkeep of our buildings. So I'll do an L I T next.
So there is money there, and we have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work you do. You're our construction crew. We've got to come up with some new.
No, 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 no. This, this kind of, this kind of finishes all the little projects already for twenty twenty-five.
I'm sure he's like, any more building, we need another precinct.
No, there is no precinct. The rest of it, y'all, y'all's precincts.
No, you're like, any more new building, we need another precinct.
That's exactly right. We're going to go that route.
Number sixteen, approved tax collector's request to use the county credit card to pay for registration and hotel accommodations in January for the Texas Schoolless Assessors Association Conference in March twenty-three, twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Carries unanimously. Thank you. Tax assessor dizzy. Number seventeen, approved tax assessor request to use the county credit card to pay for the Texas Association of Assessing Officers memberships for the tax assessor and tax office audit.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Patched unanimously. Thank you. Number eighteen, we're going to table, but I will read the item. Approved Vanguard Management and Imaging System Renewal Agreement between Copile, Gov, O S, and B County for the County Clerk's Office. Been requested to be tabled. It'll probably come back at the next meeting.
Yes, we'll figure it out, procurement.
Okay, good. Do we have a motion to table?
So move.
We have a motion to table. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. It is officially tabled. Number twenty, approved nineteen, I knew I missed one. Approved B County clerk's request to use the county credit card to reserve rooms for the county management and risk conference reservation at Kalahari Resorts and Convention on April ninth through eleventh, two thousand twenty-five.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Patched unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty, approved N I T A service agreement for the emergency management department. We have a motion and second. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Emergency Management?
No, the, in the backup documentation, it's just an agreement that's sent us for three years to provide us with supplies for the new building. That includes wallpaper, paper towels, their trash receptables, their soap dispensers, mops, and all that, just to get us started and continue with them for a three-year period.
Will they replace things, or they just supply?
So they supply, and then, so they pick up the rugs at all the entrances. They'll pick them up every week, take them and trade them out, and get them washed and cleaned and brought back. So they do that on a, on a schedule that they have.
Three years?
Three-year agreement, yes, sir.
Do we have a cost, Madam Officer? I looked at all these numbers. I'm not sure what the final cost is.
So it's. It depends on what's ordered.
Yeah, it depends. So the majority is going to be the start. Got you.
And so this would be under his budget that's provided by the county and the city that share that budget.
Okay.
So, yes, and so we just what he orders.
Do we have a motion?
Make the motion, we approve.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
You now have seats on your side. Number twenty-one, approved the renewal of twenty twenty-five auto liability recovery for the Texas Association of Counties, T A C, from January one, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. I talked to the auditor before court. We need to add one additional judge to that, the county court of law, and she said it wouldn't be a problem. So would you all?
I'll amend my motion.
To add the county court of law judge to do this. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, Madam Officer. Approved memorandum of understanding to update current American Rescue Plan project for the Grand Administrator's overtime to extend the agreement till June thirty, twenty twenty-six.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Patched unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twenty-three, request for guidance from the B County Junior Livestock and Homemaker Show superintendent, Hawthorne Shower, on steps to take for the expansion of Expo Storage Building and budget planning for the cost and payment of roof repairs for the Expo Show Barn. Please explain what that says.
Good morning, guys. As you know, I was in here two months ago, maybe, and requested permission to get bids to expand on the barn we own in the back of the, I say we own, the show board's barn that we store panels in in the back. The roof had fallen down. The door's fallen off. So ask for permission to fix it and then add on to it, which I assume I have gotten bids, and the show board has approved them. I assume I'm still good to move forward there.
How, how, how far out are you going to take it? Is this going to be the same structure or?
So the original structure is going to be there. The so the original structure is gonna be there. It's just getting re-tin and new purling. And then the doors are gonna be rebuilt, put on the front. And then we're coming off, we're basically doubling it in size. We're just coming twenty-five foot to the side and it's gonna be a lean-to with doors on it, basically.
Okay, because this is the one that's in the in the back by the maintenance?
Behind the maintenance, yes, sir.
Behind them?
Yeah, like right bu- uh right in front of the shooting sports facility.
Okay.
I was I was looking at the wrong building.
No, 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 to build a berm up a little higher than? For the shooting so. Oh, no, 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 we're in front of it, but uh.
Okay, you're talking about back the back in the back part of the behind. I got you. I was thinking.
Yeah, the horse stable, then there's like a little area where scrap metal and stuff piled. There's a barn there. And the next year, it's always been like the doors and the tin that's fallen off. Basically, we're gonna cover that part also.
Okay.
And then uh part of the bid was repairing the roof in the show barn that was leaking. And uh I guess my question on that is, is that coming out of our budget? Is that correct? It's fifteen hundred to repair the roof.
I think it would be a lot quicker if it came out of your budget.
Okay, I mean, that's fine. I just I don't know what direction on the the show board, the show barn part of it.
That would be better.
Okay.
That's all I got.
And you already procured for that roof there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it'd be a lot quicker.
Yes, that's what I was saying.
Then it would be, it would fall way beyond your show showtime a lot of the time.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, it's gonna be done before then.
Yeah. Do we have a motion, gentlemen?
So move.
We have two motions. Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Table, please, in a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All of you close same sign, passion to manus- thank you, Mr. Quattle, for for doing all of this, sir.
Yes, sir.
It uh it's a pleasure to be working with you guys out there. Number twenty-four. Presentation of certificate for completion to Commissioner Santa Farias by Randy Shower, County Extension Native Family Community Health. Is there a pickup and a a saving bond involved with this too or anything?
No. I need to, I pointed out this year, no pecans, but um no, this is this is Miss uh Commissioner Farias for successfully completing nine and a half hours of educational training for session four of the Commissioner's Court leadership account. And here is yours. I didn't get a two finger.
Well, let's give him a round of applause.
Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations, please.
On that note, I do want to extend an invitation to um the Commissioners' Court meetings and the uh guest retreat this Thursday at the Jackson County Service Building on the twelfth. It's from nine to four fifteen. Um it is forty dollars and Donnie did say that you could register at the door if you have not yet, so I hope to see you all there.
I will be there.
Perfect, sounds good. I won't, but um we have food, show food challenge from the four H kids that day, so um in Quero. But you'll have fun if you can make it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Sheriff.
Thank you, ma'am. Number twenty-five. Approved Texas opioid settlement agreement. To my knowledge, Madam Officer, there's not any right now?
Yeah.
We got one.
Not the first?
Yeah, I was on the phone with them.
Well, we do have one.
And.
What is it?
It's the settlement for the opioid um agreements that we've been doing and the attorney is waiting. We have three support, something we did.
Okay, what's the one we need to do?
Just need to approve.
Oh, you want to get all the general signature? Okay, I I don't see any reason to talk to that unless we want to hold this. We can, can we hold this until the judge is here?
It's due by the eighth.
Since we've never seen. Is it basically what we've done before?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion to approve and a second, uh to approve this with judge's signature?
Correct.
Uh all of the favor please say aye?
Aye.
All of you close same sign. Thank you, Mrs. Quattle.
You're welcome.
Number twenty-six. American Rescue Plan A R P status and projects. Uh Ms. Brana, do you have any updates for us, ma'am?
Right now, we are just cleaning up the final uh, we have our hard deadline on um December thirty-first to make sure all of these are allocated, which we are covered now. And uh we're just going through the motions and making sure that we're adding, taking care of the administration's projects.
Thank you, because it's my understanding that uh everything comes to a close December thirty-first. It's not allocated or in the works.
Correct.
And we've got every penny allocated in the works, so we're not gonna give any money back.
Correct.
Fantastic. You guys have done a great job. I've said that before and I'll say it again.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Cocheer, do you have anything, sir?
Yes, sir, everything is good, rolling along.
Good deal. Number twenty-seven. Harrison Harley, Texas Land Management G L O, Community Development Block Rent, C D B G status and project update.
There is no, there is no updates, Commissioner, at this time. Uh we're still waiting. Uh we got, right, Jennifer, we had all the questions answered the last round?
We've sent out the third request for information uh up until this point, and we have not heard anything back since then, but we have gotten the information to them within their time range.
It's in the mail. So uh, hey, it's time to get ready, so it it will come.
Okay, it's in the works. And we still have one item. Uh it is a public hearing. We cannot hold till ten o'clock. Is there anything on the agenda that we need to take care of before we take a about a twenty-five minute break?
And Ryan can't talk for twenty-five minutes on the seat, so.
What should come in?
I'd like to uh say happy birthday to Randy Shower.
Thank you.
Hey.
You know, we could sing happy birthday for you.
Uh you could not, I think, though.
You know, this is a chorus up here.
I would appreciate.
You'd appreciate us not doing it?
Yeah.
Really?
Does anybody have?
You're excused.
Anyone in the audience have anything they'd like to bring up? We have free time right now because we're fixing to go on break. Anything at all?
I'd like to hear some of the the uh ARCA projects that other counties did that y'all were uh streaming away from.
Okay, one of them is uh some counties, the elected officials gave themselves some money. And uh we did not feel that was appropriate uh uh way to use that, which was fine.
I agree.
Uh what are some of the others that we've heard of? Ms. Leach, what's some things that you've heard of that uh we didn't do? That you can say? Or maybe things that you stopped counties from doing?
I think one of the projects that was a larger concern to us that some counties chose to do was expanding their jails using pecans. It was nice that this county chose not to expand the jail. We could provide equipment that helped your sheriff's office and equipment that facilitated service delivery in your jail, but that wasn't added to those buildings, which would have been increasing concrete settings and somewhat in conflict with the ARCA intentions.
Okay. Well, I know that some counties uh didn't seek the type of guidance that we did. And we were real cautious whenever this first started. With that amount of money, to be sure we were properly spending it and following all the guidelines is why we engaged a company called Ratworks that Ms. Leach worked with. And uh been very, very pleased with the results. And there were some things that we came up with and said, well, you might want to think about doing it this way. Or this is the way that uh you might want to approach it. So uh I really can't speak to the other counties. That's the one I know of for sure, and that's something that I personally, I think the rest of the court all agree with. That money was not for to go into elected officials pockets.
I don't see how that would be possible at all.
Well, if they are not getting guidance and you have money, you can spend it any way you want until you get caught. And then it comes home to haunt you, as they're finding out in the federal government sometimes. So anything else that anybody would like to talk about?
I'd like to add just one more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to recognize Ryan and Rob as well. They've been on those meetings with us, working on the E O C every two weeks and on-site at the E O C, providing that first person perspective and guiding the process all along.
I would second that, just because this whole, doing the entire building from scrap from the bottom up, it's, you know, there's so many things that one person cannot look at. And having that entire team effort has been crucial to making sure that we have eyes on all sides of the building and that's what, you know, emergency management has been able to provide. So it's been, it's been a great experience having that team's collaborative effort.
You know, when we first started envisioning that building, if you will, the court was involved, we had a committee. And the ideas they came up with, you know, they're they're the experts in emergency management, the outside showers and all that kind of stuff. If and when, and there will be a time we have an emergency and we need to use that, it's gonna be extremely functional. And uh that is the focal point for several counties. Uh Parks and Wildlife, a lot of the people from the coast bring their equipment up and stage it at our Coliseum. It is a staging area for A E P, San Patricia Electric, Parks and Wildlife. I I I don't remember who all it is, but.
All the ambulances.
All the ambulance, we have.
Three hundred line charges.
Coast Guard.
Hundred ambulances.
We're far enough away from the coast that it's a a safe area, if you will. Of course, it can still be damaged. But it is set up to handle, what, a hundred and fifty people? Easy. Easy. Uh hopefully, we'll never have to do it, but if we do, we're ready. I know when you go in, there's section areas on the left. Well, down, further down the hall on the right, I was in it the other day looking. I couldn't understand why we had a a cabinet that came down. Well, it's a kitchen facility where you will cook uh meals for a hundred, a hundred and fifty people. So and then those outside restrooms, there's what, six? Six outside.
A regular one, one eighty-eight.
And uh it's it's a fantastic building, uh large conference room, small meeting rooms, uh nice offices. It's furnished now. It's just a matter of getting the I T information moved over, the telephones moved over and them actually physically moving stuff out of their desk over to the new offices. And with the holidays and all coming, my guess is it'll be January before all that happens.
I'd say it would be operational sometime in January.
Operation January. I'm sure that we'll have an open house whenever that happens and uh we'll invite the public in, everybody come see what we've got. We're proud of it. Uh I know Community Bears is moving over there. Uh they'll be doing the reception area. And uh very nice. It's like I said, it's one of those things that we're we're real proud of. Million and a half is probably what it costs.
No, no.
Two hundred.
Two and a half.
Two and a half, okay.
Yep.
Good deal.
Commissioner, on the first part of the first round of the ARCA, didn't we get the uh the trailer, the COVID trailer?
Yes.
So we've we've got a lot of the ARCA funds. We've got a trailer, mobile trailer that it's also, I've got hotspots and TV screens and everything else. We can move on to a disaster site and use it as a as a, you know, setup point there for everybody. And that's also ARCA funds, and we have that.
That was the the cares money. That was the first um that was the first push of money from the federal government with these cares.
We got that trailer, so that was a big plus that it could serve all the communities around.
Didn't the pickup, was that part of the ARCA or the care?
Yes, uh it was cares.
Care.
No, that was our.
It was our.
Because we had already uh, we couldn't get it with the.
Because it's a heavy-duty pickup that's completely outfitted, uh very good shape, very good shape. I would say they're probably the envy of most uh emergency management operations around us.
I tell you, we used it two weeks ago. We used the truck about two weeks ago at that big fire Papalogia. And everybody was just in amazement that that piece of equipment has everything you need to run a actual emergency scene.
Do you know, do you have a mobile repeater in that truck?
They have not been installed yet. They are actually being programmed currently in Victoria and when they finish the project for the E O C, we need to take the equipment down there to get it all installed. But it'll have uh, the trailer will have one repeater and the truck will have its own repeater as well.
Because I know we bought repeaters from uh out of these funds because B County is kind of interesting. You've got highs and lows. And to put in radio towers, you're talking a half a million dollars. We came up with the idea of using mobile repeaters in the vehicle, so the sheriff's office vehicles will also have them in theirs. Once once they get programmed. I could spend a long, a haul getting there.
Yes.
But uh we're real close.
Both the truck and the trailer are designed to be an extension of the uh emergency management and to have it fully mobile throughout the day.
Awesome.
Take a break.
Let's take about a fifteen-minute break, come back at ten o'clock, if you will, those of you that would like to see some more government in action. Those of you that don't, you're welcome to go home. Have a good Christmas. Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Rachel. Thanks, Rachel.